Thursday, May twenty second. We're going to start the founding of our commission meeting. Before we start, we're going to have a quick, uh, call. The audience is, uh, commissioners tonight. Uh, do you have a new commissioner that would be, uh, sworn in here later on today? I know his name again is, uh, full absentee, not really. Um, is there any other commissioners?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. Uh, as of now, we'll have that as unexcused absent for Kimberly Cheney. All right. Okay, let's go ahead and if everybody stand please for invocation, uh, by Commissioner.
Do you have any gracious father, we come before you. Just giving you all the praise and honor, thanking you for this day. Lord Jesus, help us. Do what's best for the city and for our citizens. Guide our hearts and our minds in the way that it should go. And Lord, we just want to thank you for the additional commissioners that are giving their services to the city and to the community to help us all make this such a much better place. In Jesus' holy precious name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the, uh, pledge allegiance and the, uh, pledge for the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual. Okay, next on agenda, we had, uh, the swearing in, but we're going to go ahead and hold off on that for a minute until, and, and just move on over to, uh, hear for remarks. Do we have a, any visitors here tonight that wants to speak to, uh, or address the, uh, the board in regards to anything not on the agenda tonight? Not on the agenda? Nope, okay. And move over and over to, uh, we're going to adopt the minutes, uh, item six point one. Go again, discuss and, uh, discuss the approval of the minutes from April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Commissioners, have y'all had a chance to look at those minutes from, uh, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five? Do we have any questions or any discussion with regards to it? Nope, okay. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes for April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
I have a motion to approve, uh, the minutes from April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Motion carries. Okay. We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. We're going to start with item one. We're going to discuss and consider for an ordinance of the city of, for the city council of the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, providing the renaming of West and East University Street between South Park and South Adelaide Street to Judge J.C. Williams Drive in the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas. N C twenty five dash zero one.
Chairman and commissioners, tonight I bring before you a naming, name change for the streets, West University and East University Street. The naming committee has, uh, been tasked with, uh, renaming, uh, various streets, and I'm going to give you more history in just a minute after I read the background on it. But the proposed name is Judge J.C. Williams Drive. So tonight, this action is mainly an administrative action, and because it has plating, that's going to, um, require us to update all of our maps and to rename it and make that available to the public, the county, what have you. Your recommendation as well, but I want to remind you, this has already been decided. They had a public hearing at the, the city's facility naming committee, and so we're just looking for your concurrence, okay? So the background is the Honorable Retired Justice of the Peace of Kaufman County Precinct Three, Judge James Curtis Williams was born to Castilla Jobe and Oscar David Williams, Sr. on December thirty first, nineteen forty-three in Terrell, Texas. A proud graduate of Burnett High School of nineteen sixty-two, Judge Williams went on to serve his country as an airborne ranger and military police officer in the United States Army until he was honorably discharged in nineteen sixty-eight. Following his military service, he earned his bachelor's degree in accounting from Texas Southern University, where he also met and married his beloved wife, Perea Lee Cooper of Seven Oaks, Texas. After graduation, the couple returned to Terrell, where Judge Williams served as Assistant Vice President of the Republican National Bank in Dallas until nineteen eighty-five. In nineteen eighty-six, Judge Williams was elected the first and only African-American justice of the peace for precinct three in Kaufman County, a position he held with honor and integrity until his retirement in two thousand and six. During his tenure, he created and implemented teen court in nineteen ninety-five, an innovative restorative justice initiative that allowed students from Terrell High School to act as youth attorneys in traffic court. This groundbreaking program not only gave teens practical experience in the legal system, but also instilled a sense of civic duty and leadership. Judge Williams' life was defined by his unwavering commitment to serving his community. He was instrumental in helping other African-Americans in Terrell become involved in politics, which led to the redistricting, redistricting of local political boundaries to ensure better representation of all communities. He actively supported countless civic efforts through organizations such as the Renaissance Club, Rotary Club, Oak Cliff Masonic Lodge, Chamber of Commerce, Terrell School Band Committee, Breezy Hill Park Restoration Committee, Raise the Roof Project, Meals on Wheels, Progressive Voters League, and Women's Softball League. And that's a lot. That's, that's a mouthful right there. A man of tradition and compassion, Judge Williams and his family made it to a point each Christmas to assemble and distribute fris- fruit baskets to families in need, a gesture of kindness that left a lasting impact on those who received them. His commitment to service extended beyond the courtroom. In two thousand and twenty-three, he was appointed Superintendent of New Oakwood Cemetery Association, where he continued his dedication to community stewardship. Judge Williams was also a longtime and active member of New Hope Baptist Church, where he served faithfully as a deacon, Sunday school teacher, chairman of the trustee board, and treasurer. Though pastors affectionately referred to him as a bootleg preacher, he was a true shepherd to many, offering spiritual counsel, mentorship, and love throughout the community. Judge James Curtis Williams is remembered not only for his trailblazing achievements, but for his humility, generosity, and determination to create, create opportunities for others. His life work continues to inspire all who knew him. Judge Williams passed on February the seventh, twenty twenty-five. So why are we here, commissioners? The Terrell City Council established a city's, city facilities naming committee to review, consider, and make recommendations in naming of city facilities. The Terrell City Council set forth a charge of initial facilities to be considered by the committee at its December twelfth, twenty-three city council meeting. On October seventeenth of two thousand and twenty-four, the city facilities naming committee considered renaming West University and East University located between South Park and South Adelaide Street. On January the twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, the city facilities naming committee unanimously approved to rename to West University and East University between South Park and South Adelaide to now Judge J.C., J.C., James C. Williams Drive. On February the twentieth, the city's facilities naming committee regrouped and by unanimous vote of those present, it's a recommendation from Judge James C. Williams Drive to Judge J.C. Williams Drive, based on street constraints. So basically, what happened was the full name would not fit on the street sign. So then they got back together, talked with families, and had a unanimous to name it Judge J.C. Williams. So what we're looking for is for staff's approval of the renaming of the East University and West University Streets between and located South Park Street and South Adelaide to Judge J.C. Williams Drive here in the city of Terrell, based on the naming committee recommendation on February the twentieth, twenty twenty-five. So I'm sure we're all familiar. If you'll go to the next page, it's kind of a little bit of a legend of where it is. And when you go to the following page, there's an aerial, so you'll see that it is between South Park to the west, and to the east, it is South Adelaide. The next few pages is an ordinance that will be presented to city council with both committees, with the, um, naming committee, as well as your recommendation and staff recommendation. And we just request that you follow with the wishes of our naming committee and vote in favor as a recommendation for city council, and I'll close for public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we're going to go ahead and have some, uh, I do have a couple participants that want to speak, and if somebody else wants to speak and didn't sign one, just let me know once we get done with these, okay? Pamela, Joe, come on up, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Pamela Jo. I'm the sister, last sibling of Judge Williams. Um, it's an honor what the committee has decided to do. Oh, man, my brother deserves it. And he was one that if I said, Judge, why would you do this? Why would you do that? Judge, why don't you do this? He says, you know, too much, too much, who, too mu- to whom much is given, much is deserved, rewarded. I think I've got it turned around. But he believed in giving. He was a very giving person. We could be in a store and somebody's getting ready to buy groceries, and he's ready to pay for the groceries, but he didn't pay for mine. But, uh, like I say, he's a deacon. He was a deacon at our church. He was judge, he was my softball coach. Um, I know this is not about me, but these are things that he taught me. He would take me to school from a little girl. There's thirteen years difference between us, and I, that was his job, to make certain that I got to school in the mornings, pick me up, make certain I got back home. He'd take me with him when he played basketball. Wherever he went, I went. And I loved him very much. And I think, like I said, I know, he's deserving of this. I can't even cover all the things that he's done and the things and what he really meant to me. But I can see that some other people kind of believe the same thing, so if it be God's will, it's a done deal.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Eva Griffiths?
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm here, uh, I had wrote a letter to go along with the zoning and everything, so I'm a little bit nervous, so, but anyway. This letter is support the proposed renaming of street. Dear committee and council members, this communication is pending to express my strong support in proposed renaming university of James C. Williams Judge Street Boulevard. Sorry about that. I believe this change would be a great way to honor memories of Judge James Williams, who was a long, long, longtime resident and a beloved member of the city of Terrell and the community, community at large. He was, he made significant contributions to our city in many ways, serving both and officers and member of numerous organizations, just to name a few. His active involvement includes, which y'all have seen before, restoration of Breezy Hill Park Committee, Progressive Voter League, Terrell ISD School Board, women's softball team, which he loved, Chamber of Commerce, Raise the Roof, the Renaissance Club, Meal on Wheels, Rotary Club. Judge had great concern for the partnership between South Terrell and Terrell Police Department. He acknowledged the needs to improve trust and relationships within that community. Judge supported relationship-based policy whereby police would establish and maintain individual relationships with the citizen and the members of the South Side that was charged to, which they was charged to serve and protect. Among his none, among his most noble accomplishment, Judge was most honored to be the first and the only African-American justice of the peace precinct three, a position where he served fairly and faithfully. Later, he became superintendent of the New Oakwood Community Association. Judge truly loved Terrell, and although he was blessed to visit other cities and travel abroad, but Terrell was his home. He always was making sure and seeking positive ways to make our community more vibrant and inclusive. I support this renaming because the change would be a powerful symbol and respect and remembrance of Judge James C. Williams and his unparalleled service to the community and the city of Terrell.
Thank you, ma'am. We have, uh, Jackson, Mr. Mrs. Jackson? Oh. You pronounce your first name, sir?
Antoine.
Antoine.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Greetings. I'm servant pastor of New Hope Baptist Church here, um, in Terrell, Texas. Um, been the pastor here for, this will be my eleventh year, um, just speaking on behalf also of Deacon Williams. Um, we met, um, in the year two thousand and fourteen, um, and I just want to second the motion of everyone who has spoke today. Don't want to take too much time, um, but certainly I just want to declare, as I have in the past, that he's well-deserving of, of this honor. I thank you again for, um, this recognition, um, and he has respect for the city of Terrell and, um, everything that we do here, um, as far as our movement impacting our community.
Thank you, sir.
Bless you.
Okay. Do we have any, I don't have any more here. Do we have anyone else here that wants to speak? Come on up, ma'am. I'll give you a few minutes. Go ahead and state your name and your address, please, ma'am.
My name is Trina Hubbard Samuels, and I live in Fornie, Texas. The address is ten twenty-three Richmond Lane, Fornie, Texas. However, I am a native of Terrell. I was born and raised here in Terrell. Uh, I am here on behalf of my best friend, Tasha Everich Williams. That's James Curtis, Judge Williams' daughter. She and I have been best friends since, oh, God, probably about seventh, eighth grade. So that means I was raised with Tasha, and I was raised with her father. Y'all knew him as Judge Williams, and y'all knew all the accolades. I knew him as Tasha's dad. And Tasha's dad didn't play. He made sure that everybody that was surrounding his daughter made sure that we all lived on a certain level, and that we all had some, um, things about us that were going to be, you know, positive and in the future. He made sure he instilled things in me, uh, to make sure that I knew that somebody out there was watching me and watching out for me. I will tell you this one little funny story. Tasha and myself and a couple other friends graduated from high school, thought we were grown, thought we would hang out till two o'clock in the morning, and Judge Williams, as only he can do, sent my friend a picture frame with a note in it saying, coming in at this time of morning is a no-no. And she politely passed that picture on to us, because it was told to be forwarded to us, because we need to know the same rules apply to her, they apply to us. He always made sure that we knew that we were going to have to be productive citizens, and that no matter what we did in this life and in this future, that he was there to watch us and help us. I am a nurse now, and I've been a nurse for quite a bit of time, and he had to start taking insulin. And I remember he called and said, hey, I need you to come do my insulin. I said, sure will. He said, oh, I'm sorry, I know you got a husband and you're married. And I said, yes, sir, I'll be there soon. I'll be there. So I did his insulin until he kind of got the hang of it. But I said all that to say to you that my friend couldn't be here because she lives far away, and she had a daughter that recently had surgery, but I want you to know, no less do I feel the same way that everybody in here feel about him receiving this honor. He deserves it. He's worked hard for it, and it's not even a, it's not even a, a concern or a guess for me. I know he deserves it. And I'm, I would be, I need to say that because my friend couldn't be here, I, I left work and took a break to make sure I got here on her behalf to tell you how she feel about him, and that's her dad, and I don't, you don't have to wonder how she feel about him, because you see the people that are here. We all love him, she loved him more, and I wish she could be here, but on her behalf, I want to be able to say that he deserves this, and please give that consideration.
Thank you.
And thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Anybody else in the audience that wish to take a few minutes to speak? No? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the, uh, public hearing. And, uh, before we go into discussion on, uh, seven point two, uh, we're going to go ahead and, uh, swear in our newest commissioner, Kelsey Weibel, correct?
Let me apologize to the board for being late. I've, we got hung up on some things and I just couldn't get here, but it's good to see all of you again. I can tell you, uh, Kelsey, if you want to come on up. While she's coming up, I know we've closed the public hearing, but I want to say a word. I, I had the opportunity for years as an attorney to, to, to practice in front of Judge James C. Williams, and Judge Williams had something that I think is very rare with judges. He had what I would term a judicial temperament. He, he never talked down to anybody. He, he always gave everybody a fair hearing, and I can guarantee you, I never saw a time when the, when the case was over, when all parties that were there, regardless of whether they won or not, felt like they'd been treated fairly and, and, and got a fair hearing, and that's the most you can ever expect from anybody in that position, and he always did that. Then lastly, I remember when he had gotten appointed and was going to run for office for the first time, he asked me a question that I'll never forget. He, he said, Greg, do you think, do you think a black person could get elected to this? Could, could a black person win? I said, Judge, I'll tell you this much, you could win, and, and he did. So, thank you for that.
Sir.
Come on up, Kelsey. I'm sorry. Okay, you ready? Okay, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kelsey Weibel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
A member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
A member of the Planning and Zoning.
For the city of Terrell.
For the city of Terrell.
Kaufman County, Texas.
Kaufman County, Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the codes and ordinances of the city of Terrell.
And the codes and ordinances of the city of Terrell.
And I further do solemnly swear.
And I further do solemnly swear.
That I have neither directly nor indirectly.
That I have neither directly or indirectly.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any valuable thing.
Any valuable thing.
To secure my appointment.
To secure my appointment.
Or the confirmation thereof.
Or the confirmation thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I haven't been sworn in since I had my small one.
All right, there you go. Take your seat.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so very much. It's good to see all of you, and again, my apologies.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, we'll do a, a photo at the end of the meeting since we need to keep rolling.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move over to, um, our discussion on seven point two. We're going to, uh, ordinance of, uh, number thirty-one oh five of the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, redesigning, signature redesigning West, West University Street and East University Street between South Park Street and South Adelaide Street, as shown on the map attached here to exhibit A, and made a part of here for all purpose as Judge C., J.C. Williams Drive, providing for the repeal of the conflicting ordinance, providing for the severability, and providing for an effective date. Name change twenty-five dash zero one. Commissioners, do we have, uh, any further discussion regards to the name change for, for Judge J.C. Williams Drive?
No, not at all.
Okay. It's like he was a, a great man. I, I don't, didn't have the pleasure of meet him, but, but once everybody's spoken to him, you know, thank you. Uh, do we have a motion in regards to, uh, name change twenty-five dash zero one?
It'd be an honor.
I'm sorry. I make a motion to, um, the name change.
I have a.
N C twenty-five oh one.
Thank you, ma'am. I, uh, I have a motion to approve N C twenty-five dash zero one. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries.
There is one thing that I'd like to say on this part regarding the staff recommendation.
Yes, sir.
It does not apply to the street being named. I don't know how important that is to the minute. I don't know how important that is to the minute.
Yes, I caught that, but I had already printed the agendas. If you'll look on your screen, the zoning, the staff recommendation is corrected in that.
Okay.
If you could see it right there now on staff recommendation. Yes, I did correct it. Thank you, though, for pointing that out.
Okay.
Keep me on my toes.
Okay. And move on to item 7.3. Have a public hearing discussing, consider for the ordinance of the city council of the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, providing for an unnamed city street between Bethlehem Street, New Hope Street, to Irvine Pioneer Avenue in the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas. Name change 25-02. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Okay, so this is another administrative action that we've been tasked to present and give our recommendation for city council. Again, this is a little different from Judge J.C. Williams' drive now. This is a no-name street. If you all know where the Breezy Hill Park off to the west is a historic cemetery out there, and let me give you the background on it because it's another very cool thing about Terrell, Texas. The small historic cemetery, also called the Irvine Family Cemetery, predates the establishment of Terrell by more than 20 years. The first burial was that of Robert Alexander, nephew of W.D. Irvine, in 1851. Now located within the city limits, the cemetery began on land owned by the pioneer Irvine family. It contains the graves of Irvine family members, their neighbors, and descendants, many of whom were responsible for founding this community. The cemetery also contained several unmarked graves. The last known burial to take place here was in 1956. So again, why are we here? Terrell City Council established a city's, a city facilities naming committee to review, consider, and make recommendations. The Terrell City Council set forth a charge of initial facilities to be considered by the committee at its December 12/23. So not only do we have Judge J.C. Williams, now we have the Irvine Pioneer Avenue, we have another list of names that will be coming forward to you when the right street to attach those, those memories of those descendants before us or an activity or an historical event, that'll all be coming over the next months, years. Who knows when the naming facility is ready to do that? The city facilities naming committee considered the naming of an unnamed street referenced as No Name Road, located between New Hope Street and Bethlehem Street and south of a local cemetery, and received public comments at its October 17/24. On January the 23/25, city facilities naming committee meeting approved by unanimous vote of those present, a recommendation to city council to name No Name Road to Irvine Pioneer Avenue. Staff recommends approval of the name of the Irvine Pioneer Avenue in the city of Terrell between Bethlehem Street and New Hope Street based on the naming committee recommendation of January 23. So if you'll go to the next page, you'll see where No Name Street is, right across near the Breezy Hill Park. The next page is a little close-up. It's a sketch of what it looks like of where the graveyard is. Now, on the ordinance here is the same thing, basically what I just read you in those comments like it was on Judge J.C. Williams' drive. So we've got all of those attached to it, but there is on page 27, a picture of the cemetery and the historic markle, historic marker. So anyway, it's been a long day. So anyway, here is for your viewing, but I'm sure like most of us, you all are very familiar with this area. So I will pause for a public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Could we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak to in regards to a name change from No Name to Irvine Pioneer Avenue? No? Okay. Do we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak against change in No Name Road to Irvine Pioneer Avenue in the city of Terrell? No? Okay. In that case, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Move on over to item 7.4. Ordinance number 3106 of the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, naming as shown on the map attached here to Exhibit A and made a part of hereof for all purposes as Irvine Pioneer Avenue, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinance, providing for the severability, and providing for an effective date. NC 25-02. Commissioners, do we have any other questions for staff in regards to this? If not, do I have a motion?
I've moved that we approve the name of Irvine Park Pioneer Avenue in the city of Terrell, Texas, between Bethlehem Street and New Hope Street based on the naming committee recommendations on January 23/2025.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion to approve No Name, uh, name change 25-02. Do I have a second?
One second.
I have a second. Although some favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Motion carries. Move on to business items 8.1. Discuss and consider construction plot in the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, being 5.179 acres for the assisted living facility focusing on Alzheimer's and memory care, being part of the McIntruff Survey Abstract 340, also known as 140 Poetry Road, Terrell, Texas. CP 24-18.
Chairman and Commissioners, I bring to you tonight a construction plot known as 24-18. The current zoning is retail and the future land use is new traditional neighborhood. The owner and applicant is Wesley Partners Limited. The background on this is back in 20, October 20 of 2020, city council passed a PD, and we, I don't think any of you were serving at that time, but there were specific guidelines on the plan development that was worked out between the developer and the city. It was voted on at PNC as well as at city council and accepted. This developer is now ready to start digging the dirt, and they're proposing a facility with 50 assisted living rooms with some being double occupancy for a total of 74 patients and 16 rooms allocated to memory care with some being double occupancy for a total of 26 patients. One of the cool things about this facility that they're proposing is it can be for long-term care or it can be for just to relieve a family that wants to take a vacation or go somewhere, and they just want to check their loved one in where they know they have a secure place to stay while they, you know, take a little break. The current zoning and planning development complies with the use of the property as well as the city's comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, and all other code studies and plans. And again, we have a signed and executed plan development by our city council, and you'll see a copy of that in the books. So what we're asking today is for you to consider this construction plot for the Wesley Oaks Memory Care Facility at 150 Poetry Road. So if you'll turn over a few pages just to get you acclimated where this is located, to page 40 is a location map. So it's here on this map. Red, we highlighted in blue is, right across the street is Dr. Bruce Wood Elementary, and then to the north of this proposed development is the Forest Creek Estates. The next page shows you that it is zone retail. The next page is our future land use. And then the following pages are an ordinance number 2854, which was executed again by council on November the 10th. If you go back then a few more pages, you'll start seeing some sketches and drawings of what the facility's going to look like in the after condition. This one right here that Katie has up, this shows you the layout. So everything that we're seeing here today basically complies with the PD and all of our comp plan and zoning requirements that we have. So I will close for any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff in regards to the construction plan Seems like we'll want, uh, business needed here in Terrell.
This is a needed facility that our community, I think, will benefit greatly from.
And the entrance is right there at Poetry?
Yes, ma'am.
Closer to the, I can't, Walnut?
So State Street is to the south. Let's, okay, if you'll go back to the location map, so you see coming down, going south down Poetry Road, which is FM 986, it's a Tech Stop facility, and you get down there, then State Street goes off to the right, and then Walnut goes to the left.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, my concern, and I, you know, spoke with you about that the other day, was, you know, it's already very difficult to merge on from Walnut onto Poetry there, but I see that they're doing their entrance, you know, farther down, so that would affect that.
Yes. Yes, that's correct. And be mindful, these type of traffic that this would generate is in the morning and then in the afternoon or on shift changes, basically, when, you know, employees are coming in, and then whatever occasional family members come in to visit the patient. So it's not going to generate traffic like an Amazon or, you know, the school system and what have you. But we're hoping with another development that you're going to hear tonight, that we're going to have some alternatives and some things planned in the future that will help, and hopefully Tech Stop's going to recognize that this portion of FM 986 could benefit from some studies, you know, for maybe a widening, a future widening or what have you, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Matter of fact, they will submit a construction, a driveway permit. It comes through our office and we have to sign on it, and we send it to Tech Stop for their review and consideration. That's true. That is true. So Chris, do you want to add anything about that?
No. This is not going to have a great deal of employees. Generally, their shift is, or, you know, seven in the morning to seven at that, so wouldn't be a major impact. There's two entrances to this facility, so there's going to be means of dispersing traffic a little easier, so.
There'll be 35...
So Josh here is...
I'm Josh. I'm the owner and developer of the property, and we'll have 35 to 50 employees, and shifts are usually six to two, two to 10, so I don't think it'll interfere with school time traffic that much. There'll be home health coming and going during the day. We'll have delivery truck for food, Benny Keith, probably twice a week, so that's the limit of our traffic.
Thank you.
It being zoned for retail, I would think that that would cause a lot more traffic, and that would have been probably...
I think that'd probably be more traffic than we're going to generate, yes.
It's very, it's, there's a lot going on right there every morning, so I think it would be a better option.
Agreed. I totally agree.
Any other questions, Commissioners, for staff? Now, do I hear a motion in regards to construction plan 24-18?
I've moved that we approve the construction plot for the Wesley Oaks Memorial, Memory Care Facility at 150 Poetry Road, Terrell, Texas.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
I have a second to approve construction plot 24-18, dash 18. Although some favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're going to kind of move over to item 9.1. Before we get to continue on that, Commissioner Wait, Kimberly or Kelsey, if you need to speak, can you bring that down for just in case sometimes? That way they can hear in case anything happens there. We're going to move over to 9.1, discussion regarding the proposed economic development ongoing negotiations with the Main Square Development in presentation of the Terranova mixed-use development.
Chairman and Commissioners, I am going to introduce you to Mr. Hugo Morales. He's with Main Square Development, and he is the one that we have been working with for a long time. Would you say seven, 10 months, or maybe longer than that? But it is going to, I'm just going to brag on it just a little bit. This developer came to us and they had already purchased over 80% of the land in their name, free and clear, okay? It's a different type of animal than we're used to dealing with because usually when developers come to us, they generally have our contention on closing the deal with the landowner pending our zoning and, you know, a development agreement and sometimes annexation. Well, there are going to be some other components of this development, and it's because part of it is in the city limits, part of it's in the ETJ, and then there's a little smidge that's in the county. But we've got that handled. We've got a plan for it, but tonight he's going to focus on telling you the enhancements of this development and some of the positive things. Hugo, you want to come on up?
Good evening, Commissioners. Hugo Morales, 409 Cedar Street, Cedar Hill, Texas. I am with Main Square Development. We are a new development company. We started basically January of last year. In this short amount of time, we've been able to put together this project, which we're very excited to present to you today and to the community. There's been a lot of work in the last eight, 10 months, as Jenna mentioned, to put this together. So first, I want to thank staff for their tremendous help on getting, moving this forward and putting it together. I'm going to start by telling you where the project is, how it came together, how it links to the city in general, to the region, and then we're going to start zooming in closer, closer to the project. And hopefully that way you can absorb everything we're doing because there is a lot going on. It's 1,500 acres and just north of town of the footprint of Terrell, and there's a lot to embrace, and there's a lot of things that can be done wrong, so we're trying to do everything right. So bear with me. If I'm too slow, just tell me to hurry up and I'll be happy to. So Terranova, it means new land in Latin, so we, we feel that that name goes with Terrell, Terranova, and we are trying to create a new type of development in Terrell, in the region, basically. I'll explain why later. So right now, the project sits just north of town is, we show this image to compare the project to other major developments that are happening throughout the region. You can see we are, I would say, the largest, closest to Terrell, so the impact of this community, we think, will be huge and very positive to the, to the, to the community. To the left, you can see the outer loop where it sits relative to the project, Highway 205, 80, 20, and the major Tech Stop corridors around the facility. So the project, as I mentioned, is over 1,500 acres, is, to the south is Poetry Road. You were just talking about that care facility. We are just a little bit north of that location, along Poetry Road. We front Griffith Road to the west, all the way to the corner where Griffith and 205 has this weird intersection. If you've driven there, it's a little strange going on there with long spur 205 and Griffith. To the east, we have County Road 245, and the project has, well, it's adjacent to the high school. We all know what that means when it comes to traffic, you know, all the things we have to think about when we're planning this project. There is an existing facility there that a lot of people don't know about, but it's, there is the Nike base. It's very interesting. I'll tell you more about that. And then there's a lot of natural corridors, huge trees, huge natural streams... And then there's a lot of natural corridors, huge trees, huge natural streams, a big pond, a big, you know, over thirty acres of a pond to the north. And there's a lot of really nice natural features that we will try to incorporate into the master plan. The project, the area of the land, the master plan, a portion is already within the city limits, as Ms. Wampler mentioned. Another portion is under a development agreement. Well, it's an annexation agreement, which that portion needs to be annexed before it's developed, and we're happy to comply. And then another portion is just in the ETJ that we will be working with the city to annex. So you can read the areas. I don't think they're relevant at this point. But the point is that we will be annexing to the city. So once you put everything you have existing, the land, the adjacency to the city, everything that's around, the natural features, we started developing a vision for this land and how could it enhance the city of Terrell and be a successful project. So we are proposing integrating the historical elements of the city of Terrell. Terrell has a lot of history, a lot of beautiful architecture. So we are not trying to be different than Terrell, within Terrell, part of Terrell, although we're a new development. We're embracing the natural landscape features of the project. We're going to create a lot of natural spaces, open spaces. Our plan is to create and connect the community through hike and bike, through a hike and bike trail system. I'll explain that a little bit further. We want to create a community that enhances the sense of belonging the city of Terrell has. I don't know if you all know, Terrell citizens are very proud of Terrell. So we want to keep that and give the citizens another reason to be proud of. We're carefully crafting a network of parks. It's fifteen hundred acres. There's over fourteen new neighborhoods, if you may, and each one is anchored on a neighborhood park. And our plan is to create a network of parks where you can safely walk, jog, run from park to park, and create this linkage of parks throughout the community. And finally, we hope that this master plan creates a really good opportunity for the city to attract new businesses, anchored headquarters, things like that. Usually, those large enterprises are looking for good places for their workers or employees to live, where they're not too far from the working areas. And we are, we hope that by creating this community, we allow that opportunity and attract new businesses to town. So the first thing we had to do was connect the community to the existing town and the future plans with the roadways. We're talking about the traffic in Poetry, that that's a problem. We're trying to alleviate that with the proposed network of major thoroughfares. We are following the city's master thoroughfare plan and enhancing it and bringing it together. So over time, there's hopefully going to be roads that would help release the traffic along Poetry and connect to 205 and bring the loops the city's planning on doing with their master thoroughfare plan. There's about thirteen miles of new roadways of different classifications. There's six-lane divided, four-lane divided, undivided, and local streets proposed. So one of the things that we are proposing, remember, I was talking about connecting the parks to the community. The traditional way of thinking about planning is let's move cars and people as fast as we can. Big roads, that's needed, right? Everybody needs to drive their car, go to work and whatever. So instead of thinking that way, we thought, let's create green corridors and put roads next to it. Instead of, let's build a road and just have a nice sidewalk next to it. We reversed that. We thought about the corridors first, the green corridors, and then the roads. So what we're proposing is a different cross-section for the roads. The six-lane divided will have a wider, much wider median than normal, parallel by fifty-foot hike and bike trail system, buffer on one side, and an additional twenty feet green buffer on the other. So as you drive, you'll see the scale of the open space. So think of this as a green corridor with lanes for cars instead of a street with sidewalks. That is the thought. That's how we plan it. When we lay down the thoroughfare system, we try to incorporate the natural spaces that this area provides. There's a beautiful pond to the north of this project that we are planning on enlarging and creating a synergy around the pond. And it just happens that two major roads intersect right nearby. So that gives us a huge opportunity to create an important place for the city and for the community. So all these trails I'm talking about connect to that point. I'll show you where that is, but the idea of all these networks connect to the intersection, to the north. North, left, right there. Yes. If you can go to the next one. So this shows you the type of street cross-sections that we're proposing for this master plan. These are just for the master, for the thoroughfare roads. You can see the typical major road. It's a six-lane divided. You can see the scale of things. There's more green buffers than lanes, and that's by design. I don't know if you've ever been jogging on the street where cars are just speeding next to you, and it just feels awful. My wife is a runner, and she's always complaining about that. And with the idea with this is that you will be safely jogging, strolling with your kids, with your dogs, whatever, without really feeling the impact of cars driving next to you. On the bottom right, you can see a local street. That is the streets that we're going to be proposing to connect parks to parks within neighborhoods. So if you live in one neighborhood, there's a central park in your neighborhood, and then you're able to get on a hike and bike trail system and connect to the next park on a street like this, actually in a green corridor like this with two lanes for cars. This is just showing you more of the cross-sections we're proposing. In addition to what we are showing, there would be, we're proposing some enhancements on these type of streets at the intersections. Everything is thought out for pedestrians, making sure that pedestrians can cross the street safely, that there's enough warnings, that there's enough enhancements, light, and everything that is needed to create a safe environment for pedestrians. So the master plan proposes a mix of land uses that we think work together. You have residential uses, commercial uses, a heavy mixed use, and then support uses such as public facilities and small commercial. If you look, the network of thoroughfares create this area that I was describing. It's shown in purple in the land use. So this is the core of the community. When I say the core is the, we're creating what we call a Terranova village. Think of it of a small downtown, master plan downtown, town center-like. It's not a huge town center just because we don't think the traffic and the size of the community can support it. However, it's smaller and is very well planned that we think that as the community develops, then it can support such development. We are dividing, the residential areas are planned by density. You can have small lot, big lot, but there's a limited number of lots or a density, a maximum density you can have in the defined residential uses. That's how we break out the residential. So you have medium, low density, high density, and low density, medium density, and high density. I'll describe later what that means. This is the conceptual layout for the master plan. You can see, we implemented the vision that we're trying to, that I was describing earlier. There's a central park on each neighborhood, and they're all interconnected, and they all lead to this central area over where the pond is. The way we thought the neighborhoods is we place the park first and then the houses around. Traditionally, neighborhoods are planned, let's just get as many lots as we can, whatever size was defined, and then let's comply with the open space and the park requirement. So you end up with these weird parks. We thought different park first, houses around that, and then connect them somehow. So the way the streets are planned, the neighborhoods planned, is all thought around the parks. Just to give an idea of the impact this community is going to have in the city, to the left, you have what you currently have in the city. There's one neighborhood park in the north part of town. When this community develops, there's going to be twenty-seven additional parks just in this area. So the, this master plan is planning on bringing twenty-seven neighborhood parks, about two-hundred nineteen acres of natural green spaces. About thirty, this is thirty million hike and bike trail corridor systems, and there's about between twenty-five and thirty miles of hike and bike trails, all within the community. So our parks will have the features shown in this exhibit. This is a conceptual park that shows the elements that we are going to have in each park. Maybe a mix of the elements, maybe all the elements. It just depends how the community responds and what the market allows. But at a minimum, we're going to have playgrounds, sport courts, fields, a good network of trail system, detention pond if needed, parking. And these will be planned with safety in mind, first and foremost. So one thing that we're going to bring later to you is the proposed zoning for this project. We're planning a plan development. We're calling it Plan Development Terranova. And what we're proposing is a little bit different than what you've seen before because we are proposing land uses with a maximum density. Usually, you see very technical parameters, you know, X number of lots, certain width, this and that. We are doing that, but we are regulating the density more than anything. We don't want to maximize a little area and forget about the open space. It's a very different feel when you are in, let's say, high-density area with a lot of open space. Then it doesn't feel high-density. We're not proposing high-density. Most of the density in the entire master plan is a little bit over three lots per acre, which is technically low-density. All the lots will be front-loaded. We have several multifamily pieces that will comply with the city ordinance. We're not asking to revise anything on the zoning. As I mentioned, we will be requesting the modified cross-sections for the roads and special signage for this development. All that will be in the PD, in the zoning application that we put together. You'll see it eventually, hopefully soon. And that's what zoning we will be requesting. The project is planned in fourteen phases. They're market-driven, of course. If everything goes to plan, there's fourteen phases, basically fifteen to eighteen years in the making. This plan shows the order of phasing. Basically, we start on Griffith Road with a connection to 205, at least planned, per the thoroughfare plan, and then grow towards Poetry Road and create that connection, that release of poetry towards 205, instead of having to go through town, all the school traffic that happens there, hopefully starts going this way towards 205 and alleviates a lot of the traffic problems at State, Poetry, can't remember the other one. So this is the phasing plan. You can see a total of almost forty-eight hundred units, twelve hundred units of those are multifamily, and about two-hundred and fifty are town homes. This is the area that I was describing as the Terranova Village. Hopefully, the traffic and the community grows that supports this mixed-use area. It's about fifty acres, not including the lake or the pond. And we're planning about two-hundred thousand square feet of retail, fifty thousand of restaurants, sixty-five thousand of office, three hundred multifamily units, and the mixed-use village, what is technically the village. This is a concept of that. We plan to anchor this with a user here in the main square. We're looking for an anchor, so all help is welcome. This is just a concept of what that would look like. And then the next one is a concept of what the streets will generally look like, the major corridors. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
You've got a huge project ahead of you there. Commissioners, any questions in regards to? I keep up, is this just a discussion? We're not voting for anything tonight in regards to this?
We need them. We are. Connected to the city roads?
So right now, here in this location, this village will be at the northeast, northwest end, which will tie into State Highway 205, which is a Tech Stop facility. Then the southern east section where Poetry Road, that is also a Tech Stop facility. The arterials that are planned to connect through, that will come out either at Griffith Street or then continue on to the west to come out at 205, that's going to be a collaboration, and the city is currently negotiating a development agreement, and we'll be working out the financial terms and all with that. We do know that we're going to create a TERS district. We're looking at TERS number six. And so we have a lot of discussion and a lot more planning to do. But this gentleman here and his team has already put construction dollars, estimates together. He's already provided a TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis, and so he is way ahead of the curve, you know, to be able, when we bring you a planned development, that we have more details and I can provide that information. So we're not quite ready to do that, but we're getting close, aren't we, Hugo?
Do you have any idea in regards to a school in that neighborhood?
Well...
Or land for future use?
We are surrounded by schools. And I understand there's other schools being planned around it, not necessarily within this master plan community, just because they were already planned around. So when we do the school demand analysis, they weren't needed. That doesn't mean we're not willing to help. Well, I want to thank you all for your time, and hopefully I get to see you soon. I'm sorry. Oh, thank you.
What's the projected timeline? You said, did I hear it earlier? You said fifteen years in the making?
Correct. It's market-driven, of course, right? If the demand exists, they were anticipated, and by the time this is all said and done, it's between fifteen and twenty years. I know it's a big gap, but it just depends how the market goes. We are planning on starting construction this year on Phase One.
At the window by the Nike Air Base, correct?
Correct.
The Phase One area?
Yeah, if you pan forward, right there. You just missed it. You can see Phase One is on the left, right there on Griffith, by the Nike.
We put the emphasis on Phase One to kind of direct the traffic away from the school for at least that.
Yeah.
So you'll see some arterial roads going back to Poetry Road, but not the houses won't be there.
So basically... That's correct. So, based on the traffic impact analysis, the restraints that we have already with certain roads in Terrell, we know that it would be hazardous to our school traffic and all if we started along FM 986 Poetry Road. So, we're strategically working with them that Phase One will divert traffic and have an alternative coming out at Griffith and eventually on to 205. You want to say, tell her?
205 is tech stop.
When it tees into 205.
Right, right. Correct. We feel that by the time Phase One comes in, Griffith, traffic diminishes drastically, because now you have the connection to 205 quickly on the new road.
Look forward to seeing all these phases come in, you know, as the city works with you. Commissioners, do we have any other questions for?
Just, what I would say is that since this is becoming public, you know, breaking, you know, there's a lot of people watching this meeting, you know, to keep in mind that as we move forward to grow Terrell, this is, I like the project, by the way, but the new roads being city, there's people in the city now who are bringing an emphasis, well, my roads are all crap. I know it's not mainly for your development, but this is more of a city, just to think about the people that have been here for years and years and years, and the roads are, some of the roads are in bad shape, and I know we're working hard to get those improved, but yet we're going to help with the new roads and kind of make it feel like we're forgetting about Terrell to make way for this new Terrell. Even the name itself, New Land, and it's kind of like a big emphasis that I'll make as a commissioner, as best chairman. It's just, it's really important we don't forget what we've been working hard for, ever since obviously, for years and years and years, just to take away the focus off this, what we have now, and focus towards some other unexplored land, and that would be my comment. It's not mainly towards you as the developer, but it's mainly something, because she hit a great point. It's like, where does tech stop, and where does the city maintenance begins? And there's people still complaining about their road while we're making way for new roads. See what I mean? That's the only comment I'll have, I'll make, and I'll conclude with that.
Well, thank you, everybody, again. It's going to be very, very exciting working with you all in the future. We can wait. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner, do you have any questions for city staff? Anything? Before we go into railing, I'd like to bring up our newest employee, and Chris, do you want to make an introduction here? Come on up, Brianna. She's a little upset with me that I didn't warn her that we were going to introduce her.
So, as you know, as we're growing, I get the proud privilege to introduce Brianna Santiana. She comes from, she's an engineer, joining the engineering staff, and she comes from Colorado, the University of Colorado Buffaloes, so we got her down here. But anyway. So, you're going to be seeing her in the future, presenting and being a part of the staff and things that we going on. So, she's going to be a good asset. She's been here third week. She keeps coming back, so we're proud about that. So, that's always a refreshing thing, to see her in the morning. So, just want to introduce you to her, and that you'll be seeing her, so you'll see her recognizable face.
Welcome aboard, ma'am. Glad to have you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to continue on discussion out of 9.2, discuss various amendments to the zone ordinance, 3080.
I like to talk about things before we bring them to you to make decisions. So, I'm going to let you in on a few secret phone calls that we get in our office about 10 times a week. So, we're going to bring it forward. We're going to talk about it. We're going to, I want to kind of know how the commission leans one way or the other, because, you know, we don't like controversy, and some things are just not worth it. But we owe it to our applicants, and we owe it to the people who call and ask our office questions to explore the possibilities. So, we get several phone calls a month. Number one, dealing with tattoo studios. We were very strategic in our last update with the zoning ordinance, not the last one that we did, but the previous zoning ordinances, to make sure that tattoo studios were allowable in zoning districts that don't actually exist inside the city of Terrell. So, it makes it almost impossible to open a tattoo studio, because we have no properties that are zoned in the recommended zonings. I think with an SUP, it can go in light industrial, but that is the only location. So, in just open conversation and dialogue with P&amp;Z commissioners, staff has kind of put together a couple of recommendations where we think that if we're going to go with the SUP route, that we could possibly help negotiate these in a commercial or highway corridor area. So, that way, we would still definitely make sure that the facade, make sure that the outside, how they're doing business, the hours of operation, et cetera, all of that would still be contained within an SUP. But it kind of opens up some other areas where these businesses could possibly go. So, just kind of trying to get a feel for that. You know, we don't want any controversy, but it, there's just a lot of opinions one way or the other. So, I was trying to get a feel from P&amp;Z if you thought that that would be something that wouldn't shock you if I brought an ordinance forward to you, or if you had any other recommendations other than those two changes. Because right now, it is only allowable with an SUP in heavy commercial, which is VC, which we have no properties inside the city of Terrell that is actually zoned VC. So, when people call, there is nowhere for them to go here in the city. So, we're trying to figure out a happy median, something that possibly P&amp;Z would be open to considering an SUP within those zoning areas. So, staff recommendation for that, if we bring this forward, would be highway corridor and commercial. So...
There was, I can't recall when it was, but commissioners, I know there was an issue in Fornie. Have you looked at Fornie in regards to hookah?
We're going to talk about that here in just a second. Yes. That's going to be my next hot topic. Yes.
Because I see that in the cigarette.
So, right now, we're just going to talk tattoos, and so our recommendation is an SUP in highway corridor and commercial. So, unless you have a whole lot of heartburn about that, or if you've got any other suggested areas, that's how staff is kind of leaning towards their recommendation at this point.
Would be reasonable. That way, we can look at each one and at least give them an option.
Right, and it would be on an individual basis, and we could put different restrictions in there depending on the businesses that are around them, et cetera.
And the restrictions, we'd like, the length of it, they can use the SUP, they have to renew or something like that, just in case they're not following?
Right. We could do annual inspections and renewals. We could make sure that we limited the hours of operation, things like that. So...
That would be great. Yes.
Okay. If y'all feel good with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, let's go to the second one. And so, it's not just hookah, but also cigar.
Yes.
So, which is going to require an extra step, because as most of you probably know, the city of Terrell has a no-smoking ordinance, period. And so, this would actually require us to recommend to city council an amendment to our smoking regulations, which would allow for cigar lounges and hookah lounges if we decide that we want to bring this forward. In the ordinance, the packet that I gave you, it talks, whenever we describe a cigar lounge or a hookah lounge, it says to see Chapter 7-Bash-10, which is the smoking regulations. And I didn't put a copy of that in your packet, but what I wanted to let you know is that for the smoking ordinance amendment, it recommends a separate ventilation system. And so, it has to have its own ventilation. And so, that is taken from other cities who actually allow the cigar lounges and the hookah. And so, I've had the fire marshal look at that, plus our building officials, so that we're kind of beefing up the smoking regulations and the building regulation if we allow this. But I will tell you, I have two people right now who are ready to open one. And so, one would like to be in the downtown district, one would like to be out within crossroads. Again, we're kind of thinking the same avenue as the tattoo, that it wouldn't just be allowable in a zone, but it would have to be an SUP, so that we can look at the surrounding businesses. So, here, again, we were looking at cigar lounge within commercial and commercial and light industrial. I haven't jumped out there, and it's scary for me to do the SUP within the central business district or downtown district, but I know that that's going to be a hot topic and something that possibly would be asked for. So, I look to y'all for any assistance or recommendations whenever.
For the downtown courier, I know that technology has changed a lot, especially with ventilations. My main concern would be like the neighbors next door, but I know, and I'm pretty sure maybe staff would also look into before they consider anything, as an SUP, or if they do a ventilation system, just to make sure that it doesn't harm any of the local, there are businesses that are there. I know with, like I said, with the technology being the way it is today, I'm pretty sure they got something that we can, maybe cost it, but long as they're able to abide by that and not bother any of the next-door businesses in regards to the smoke, because I know cigar lounges will be able to smoke inside, correct?
Yes. Yeah, and so, that's why it would require the wall separation and the separate ventilation system to separate the tube.
And is that SUP, I think it'd be great. That way, we can able to manage it, make sure we go in there and tell them what can and cannot do. You know, especially if we're going to approve something down in downtown. I know, I don't know how big these are. I know they had an issue with, and like I mentioned earlier in Fornie, I don't know how they went. I didn't get to follow up on that in regards to that, but...
Well, what I will tell you is, I searched far and wide to see what other cities were doing this, and Fornie, of course, comes up. I have here, Waco actually just opened theirs, which was fun to read through. So, it's called a separate air ventilation system, and what it does is it separates the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, and it provides additional blockage between any area, any connecting buildings or outside.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, anyway, I used model, there was Waco, there was lots of news articles about how the comments went in Waco whenever they did it. And so, I've just tried to do a lot of reading to prepare y'all, and the city council, Temple lifted a 20-year ban so that they could have them, and that was for tattoo, and then they also went back and did the cigar. So, it's a popular item right now, and we're just, as staff, we're trying to be considerate of, you know, why certain decisions were made, but also to let y'all know that these are the requests that we get. And if you're open to these suggestions to city council, we just wanted to have a talk with you before we threw it on you. Health codes, they would have to abide by anyway, because they'll fall under a certain licensing with the state. And so, they'll have to file all of that with us, with the SUP. So, health codes would be standard, and we would just up our building codes with the ventilation system. And then, I really do feel like an annual SUP renewal is not too much to ask, especially in the infant stage, making sure that, you know, we're getting the right businesses that come in and that do the right thing. And so, we would require an annual inspection and CO as well.
The SUP would be a great way to go in that direction.
Okay, okay.
Commissioners, any questions of that?
We just didn't want to throw anything on you if there were going to be any huge hiccup. So, I appreciate y'all just letting me kind of talk you through it for a few minutes. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I saw this back in, a couple of months ago in Fornie, and I remember reading about it, and they were having a big issue about it. But if we can manage with the SUP, we'll be, I think we should be in great health. Any other discussion in regards to that?
Chairman, I don't have anything else, so I think we've called it a night. I would like for you all to stick around. Let's have a picture.
Other than that, we have a meeting adjourned. Thank you.
So, I got one Stephanie of you, and I got you standing up, and we can get a group picture, and I wish we had our other commissioners here, but... Y'all want to do it right there?
We can come over here in the front. It'd be fine.
Okay.
You want to come up from the front back here?
I was going to see if I could get it here, under the sign here. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, get in the, yeah, in the middle.